Our department heads to do it. It's part of their job. They can, the cost is very minimal, if there is any at all. And what happens is we have an independent report from the people that want to build, and we have reports from our department that we can look at and analyze. And I think it's a great tool, I really do.
No, I'm not debating that, I'm just curious. Do other, I mean, do other towns impose this on the developers as well? Is this typical?
It's not unusual. It's actually been in the regulations for a long, very long time to require those. For communities to be looking at the return on investment, especially if there's infrastructure involved or other resources, is one of the themes that I heard this year and the two previous years when I've been at American Planning Association conferences. So, it's a good idea. The thing with each department doing their own, they were actually, that, their piece was handled by the developer interviewing them and getting the information. And it was very consistent with what we learned, both through the Woodmont process and by the review of the Woodmont system impact. They were all consistent. So, but it was informative to us to see what a project the size and magnitude of Wallace Farm would cost the town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Cynthia may have already answered my question, but is this something we can require now without an ordinance change?
It's already in the regulations, yes. And it's allowed by the RSA.
And I also wanted to just make the point, I think it was the zoning board that required the analysis to be done for Wallace Farms. It wasn't us, right?
Actually, they did a financial analysis for Wallace Farms for the ZBA in terms of what it was going to be costing to build that. We had them do a typical fiscal impact analysis for the, which is what I sent to you.
Okay. I misunderstood. You sent to us.
Yeah, that's what we had, which I agree with Jim, it was very well put together. At least tax positive.
Good.
Anything else?
Well, the question is, is it okay to handle this administratively?
Yes. Would that be all right with the board to handle this administratively?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Cynthia?
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anything for the board? See, none. The only thing I just wanted to mention is the Master Plan Implementation Committee is meeting on the 28th of May, which is the fourth Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Sunny Crest Conference Room. And people are encouraged to attend. Say, what's going on?
Not including the committee.
Okay, so we'll get to main business here. We have a conceptual discussion first. We'll do that before we have a public hearing on a rezoning request. So, the company is Rafco Incorporated. Richard A. Flyer, trustee, the owner and applicant, Tax Map 951. This is a conceptual discussion to consider the applicant's proposed mixed-use development at number 132 Pillsbury Road, and this is on agricultural residential one. So, a conceptual discussion is just a discussion and exchange of ideas between the board and the applicant. There's no decisions made or anything. There can be guidance given, but that's at your own risk. But what we look for is a dialogue. And just identify yourselves for our records, please.
Okay, I'm Richard Flyer.
I'm Bill Byrne.
Bill and I have been on and off in business together since we were in our twenties. Well, me, I was in my twenties, I don't know about Bill. We built Hampshire Plaza on Elm Street when we worked for a company, a development company at that point. So, I've had a little bit of a history here. I do have a daughter that teaches school here, and I have a granddaughter that is in the ninth grade. And as we visited over the years, we kind of fell in love with this town. And I had been hoping to sort of semi-retire and spend more time with my family and grandchildren. And so, we started learning about the town and the beauty of the center and every bit of it. And I spent some time with some of the farmers, Andy Mack and some of the others, learning a little bit about what they're about and the future of farming. I approached the church that owned the parcel that we're talking about, the old Presbyterian Church, in the summer of 2011. And at that time requested, asked if they would have any interest in selling the parcel. And we talked for about a year, and things, I guess, happened within the community and the churches. Eventually, they got back to me and had me write an explanation of what I wanted to do or saw as a vision for the property. And they seemed to like it and decided to sell me the property. So, we went through a process, took a while, of having them meet the leaders of the church first, and then the church itself, the entire congregation voted to sell us the property as long as we would continue this vision. Then the Orchard Presbyterian Church came to our attention because they had an option to purchase the property. So, we went through the same process with them of explaining what we hope to do, our interest in the center of the town and the old historical nature of it and what it meant and why we wanted to live there and have some of our other family members live there and be able to walk to the library or the schools. So, they liked the idea. And again, that congregation decided to allow us to go forward from their point of view. We entered into a legal agreement with both that if this project went forward and if there was ever a change or a desire for us to move or something happened or any change or if somebody approached us someday and wanted to buy it or our family after us, that both churches would be notified first if anybody approached us or if there was to be a change. Because they were concerned that in the future, maybe long after we're here, that maybe somebody would want to put something in the front house that wasn't really acceptable or right, in their opinion, for the center of town. So, we went through that and we bought the property. The house in the front, I don't know if any of you have ever seen it inside?
Yes.
Well, it's kind of in its last grasp of air or fresh air. It leaks terribly, it's filled with mold. It structurally, that smaller side over the kitchen is, the floor is all rotted now. But I think it's the most beautiful thing going, and it's one of six of our historic buildings, I think six, in the center of town. So, it's very precious. It was built in around 1880 and as a farmhouse. But it still has some good bones in it, and we want to rehab it, restore it, sort of as a gift to the town, because it's very expensive to bring that back. And it doesn't have a lot of utility to it, except that, again, it's part of the fabric of the center of town, and we think it would be beautiful. We have been in real estate for our lives, and I have been responsible for the restoration of over a million square feet of historic properties. It's not our main business, but I have been very responsible for that. And the last home we lived in for many years is in Brookline, Mass. And we restored a property there that was built in, it's a very famous property, but it was built in 1904 and not touched after that, and the same family lived in it. So, by the time we bought it a little over 15 years ago, it was, in a way, was habitable, but it was getting to be like that house. And we work with the town and the Historic Commission very closely in terms of keeping the character of the architecture and bringing back the house so that people could inhabit it safely. And we have a really terrific relationship with the Historic Commission in Brookline. They'd be very happy to talk to any one of you about what we've done over the years with that community. Here, I would plan in the front house to have the first floor after it's got a new floor, to have a small office of about five or 600 feet. We're planning and have been working for several years before we moved up, and I moved up within the past year. We rent a house over on Isabella Drive, and we've just renewed our lease for another year. But with the idea that we'd be going forward and trying to make this our home. We have another child with four, more grandchildren, and because we've fallen in love with the school system, we really want to get them up here. And our main mission was really to, again, my wife and I, to slow down, be part of the community, and spend a lot of time with our grandchildren, helping them grow up. So, we've gotten involved with the school in various ways, and that's kind of important for what we want to do here. So, the site would have us, my little office in the front, we would make a small apartment above that in the front house for someone in town that needs a small apartment, maybe a teacher, maybe somebody with the town hall, but something, again, where they can walk to work, and that would be rented to them. The rest of it, we build a small house in the middle. Well, there's the plan. Is that the plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay. They look bigger. Anyway, a small house in the middle for my daughter who lives in town. Our house would be that one there. And in the back would be a barn, looking like a barn. Our picture isn't, that you're going to see doesn't quite do it justice. Where the cars, the cars would be underneath for the four houses. And on the second floor would be an apartment on the whole floor for my daughter and my four grandchildren and her husband. This would all be one ownership. We would plan to pay the taxes, which would probably quadruple or go four or five times more than the town is getting now, for that. What you would see from the front of the property on Pillsbury would be basically the front house and a little bit of the house on the right. It's really set back quite far, and you really wouldn't see all that much more, maybe a glimmer of red from the barn. We tried to design and plan the two houses in the middle and the complex to be in keeping with the historical section down below the Orchard Church. The houses actually, the two capes that would be built would be very similar, except made for modern living in front to that house. And there is another building that's going to go up there, but this would emulate that. It's something that when, on Old Home Day comes by and all the activity takes place down there and goes over to the town green, you know, people could also wander in this property, and this would be just as kind of filling it in, in keeping with what the image of the center of town is. Right now, the property doesn't have any trees, other than the ones either on our property or on the church properties. They haven't been taken care of for about 50 years. Some need, they all need pruning, but there is a lot of huge amount of work that has to be done. And whether they're on the church property or ours, we plan to bring them back and put them in good shape. The rest of the property is just a gravel sort of parking lot. There's not even a weed that is growing on it. And I wonder what's under it. However, in back of the house, at some point, maybe as much as 20 years ago, someone dumped a very large amount of fill, which is, you'd go in the back now, if any of you go over and take a peek, and you'll see a briar patch. And in fact, what the hill is now is sort of like a groundhog's version of, there's many ground, it's unbelievable. If you look down from the house and look at all the holes and all the groundhogs living there, I never thought, sort of like a prairie dog village on this mound, but that has to be removed. Otherwise, we would landscape this. We do plan very close work with sustainable and organic practices on the site, what we put on it. The, let's see, I just have a few notes here. I just wanted to make sure that we deal with them. But our guess is the house won't last another winter. And it took a long time to buy it. The wonderful thing is that we've become great friends with both congregations. They've been so nice to us, and they continue to work with us and support us, and it's been a great way to meet people. The idea of having my office there, just like anybody would have an office in their home. But we have some large plans of development around town, over, more near the airport. We've optioned a large piece of property there. And I want to be accessible to people, which means that when my team is up here or I'm sitting in the house, in the office, anybody in town has a question, good or bad, can drop in, and we'll answer their questions, and we'll be there for them. We don't want to be intimidating, and I'm trying to make my life easier anyway in terms of just walking to work and not doing anything, you know, anything more. The plan, and I'll turn it over to the experts, Bill and the others, the plan, we plan to work with the high school to sort of do a, sort of this old house kind of a program. Bill built the barn, by the way, down in Concord that this old house is in and expanded it.
It's Ask This Old House program.
Yeah, Ask This Old. Well, we're going to, we've talked to the superintendent about the idea of having the group over at the school that's involved in media work with us to film every bit of the transition of the house being restored and then put it on the local cable. And we want to do that because the center of town's so important to all of us. And this is a chance for folks all around town, if they want to dial in, to see what, week by week, what would be going on with their center of town. So, that is basically what we're doing. We've been involved with the high school so far and gave them a very large art library, which is now in the high school library. And it's, again, we're mostly interested in preparing young people for what they're going to be facing out in the world and how to do their best. So, we're very interested in being near the high school and the other schools and being sort of populating a little bit the center of town and helping to keep it beautiful. Bill is, he's built a lot of things, small things, but he also built Copley Place. He doesn't tell everyone, but Copley Place is in the Back Bay of Boston. And we've, we're all veterans, we've been through it all, all the ups and downs of working with towns. I have not enjoyed working with one as much as this over the last few years as I have with the planning department and John Vogel, his operations, Cynthia and the others, and the previous acting manager of the town. They were just so welcoming and working with them. And you have a GPS system here that no town we've ever worked in around the country has. I mean, the way this town is mapped and the information that you can get and how available it is has made things amazing for us. And we've never, as big as the towns and cities we've worked with, we've never had this kind of thing or cooperation. I ended up, I don't know how it happened, but I ended up one night a few years ago going to the planning process that you were doing for the new town planning process. And there were a lot of folks there. An old friend of mine, John Michaels, was there. He's no longer here, but he and I handled the largest bankruptcy many years ago in the late 70s in New Hampshire's history for the collapse of real estate all over New England. And he was the trustee, and I worked with him handling all the properties. And so, we became a little more familiar with each other. But when I saw the process, the way people cooperated and what you came up with, maybe not everybody saw it or was there, but I don't know of another town that has a working model like that that can tweak and work with it and actually see what some of the areas could be someday, every inch of the town. So, it, you know, it just made me not want to retire so much. And so, we've gotten real busy, and I've gotten my friends, Mike Manzo, who built many of the buildings in Kendall Square, and Bill, who's been involved with him and his son, Mike's son, to join me in what, everything we're going to be hopefully doing to make the town even more wonderful. So, that's why I'm here.
Okay. Could you just review the uses of these buildings that you have up here, just to refresh our minds and help reinforce it?
I'll point for you.
Okay. The old Naylor House. We're hoping to call this Pillsbury Farm. I know, because it's easy to find if we put Pillsbury on it. And I, as I've told Andy, I would love to be a farmhand. I mean, that was sort of my dream, you know, not being a farmer, just a farmhand, you know, learning, getting out in, so he's, he probably put me to work on something. But that house in the front, the ground floor would be my office. It's got a, well, it doesn't now, but it'll have a screen porch there in the front on the left. And the entrance on the right, the front door, right there, yeah, there'd be a little subdivision. There's a wonderful old staircase, the original staircase inside going up to the second floor. The original floors are on the second floor, and there's actually a neat attic that was used for, I guess, a bedroom. So, we would take the second and third floor and make that into a small apartment that we would lease out to someone in town that needs a small but, and not too expensive place to live. So, that's the plan for the front building. The next one would be for my daughter, it would be three bedrooms. And it's, again, the shape of it in the front of both of those little houses would be the same as the, down in the historic section.
The Morrison House?
Yeah. The Morrison House. And I think we can do a great job. We've got some really good pictures of what we'd like to, what the details would be. There won't be basements. We're going to put everything on slab, because I've never had good luck with basements. And everything gets ruined in my basements eventually, the mold and mildew. So, we're going to have, we're going to try to do some interesting things. The floors will be heated. There's a local person in town that's a plumber, and we're going to bring him in. Board had him over there and get him involved, because he does good work. And so, that'll be three bedrooms, small. My house would be, with my wife, would be that one. That, if you've ever had the fortune, you should sometime, drive over and park your car and look over the hill. You'll see to the left the new church, the apple orchards and the historic area, and then just trees on the horizon. But that's where the sunset goes down every day, and it is just amazing. And because it's on a little bit of a hill, you know, we'll be able to sit in that house and, it's glass on the side, and overlook the sunset. And so, we're, you know, but the complex is, a small grouping in the center will be, we hope, a wonderful, sort of like a small little town green, the size of a house, but it'll be planted with things that are appropriate. And then, we have a little, we want to put a little bird sanctuary. If you look at my daughter's house in the middle, right on the top there, right in there, we're very much interested in birds. I don't know, we feed a lot of them. And we want to make that sort of like what Andy does over in his little porch there, you know, he's got every bird in the world somehow landing there. And we do in our back porch too, but that's what we want to do. And then in the back will be a barn. Underneath will be two parking places per car. It'll be a little deeper than cars, because we're going to take a third of the size in and create a storage locker in each one of the spaces, sort of like a little storage locker, where you have a door that goes up, just like in a storage place. And that'll replace the storage that we would have had in basements and other stuff, maybe a workbench or something. And then above would be a long apartment, sort of looks like a dorm. There, again, four grandchildren would be living in that, and right now, they don't all have their own bedrooms. This will be a chance for them to each have a bedroom and a place to study in. So, that's what would be upstairs. It'll all be one ownership, all one tax bill. It'll be basically a rental property. That provides us with the best opportunity to structure the financing and the way it would be set up. And my kids would pay rent for a while. And then eventually, if I were not to be around or we, something happened to any one of us, it would just be a rental for someone else in the community that wanted to maybe downsize and be more in the center, near all the different things like this town hall and everything else. So, that's all the plan is, but we want to make it as historical and special as what the folks are doing down the hill at the historic area there. And so, it'd just be another continuation of it.
Okay. So, basically, there's two, you know, two single-family houses, office with an apartment up above and then a garage with an apartment.
A barn, a barn, but used as a garage, but.
It would look like a barn.
It'll look just, it'll be, yeah, it'll look just like a barn. It's just we'll have doors that go up where we park the cars underneath instead of horses. And then on the second floor, we would utilize it for an apartment.
I will go to staff, and then we'll do the board. This is a conceptual discussion, so it's just an exchange of ideas. No decisions are being made. Now, I'll go to the, anyone from the public has input on this. One of the things as we go through deliberations here that we have to consider is whatever happens for zoning, whatever happens for a site plan goes with the property. So, whoever succeeds you is stuck with his plan or, you know, it's, we always worry about succession, because it might work for one owner, but then if that owner decides to sell, what happens?
Well, then they would simply have to go through a whole process again. But there's part of a protection for this and a buy-in by the two congregations that abut it. And I only mention that because, you know, they have been very interested in, concerned and involved in, in trying to make this something that they would like too. So, we've spent a lot of time talking with each other and planning and, you know, to make this entire campus. It could, you know, I mean, it could be many things, but right, but over all these years, all it's been is a sort of ancillary, it's kind of dangerous parking lot for folks. And we, you know, we, I mean, just think, I mean, I don't know if any of you like being near more of an urban, I consider, coming from Brookline, that's my idea of urban. But to be able to walk across the street to the town green and, you know, listen to the music or the different performers that are there during the summer, I mean, I can't think of any better kind of a setup in the old forest across the street than Max. It's kind of perfect for our way of thinking, so.
Maybe I should say, like historically, the town, what is the town of Londonderry, when it was incorporated in 1722 encompassed what is now Derry, Auburn, Chester, Manchester, Windham. And when the town of Londonderry and Derry separated in 1830, the real center of this town is actually East Derry.
I know.
And West Londonderry is the west parish of the Presbyterian Church at that time. So, we're not a typical New England town. We don't have a defined center, but we're trying to get some definition in there.
But there aren't too many towns anywhere in New England that have the character of this. this center and forty-five hundred students a day coming right there in a, in a building, the town hall and the library. The infrastructure in your center is better than most and yet you still retain some buildings. There's a ways to go. I, the Grange, for example, really could use some bathrooms and, and, and other buildings could use a little bit of work. But it has, it, it, because of the town's plan of, of keeping the development rights fro, or buying them from some of the farms, you've created a center of town where, where when you drive in, it's, it's just totally inspiring. You, you come down the main road past, past Max Apple Farm, and I can't think of many town centers that have an old beautiful farm that's going to be there, hopefully forever, and a few wonderful buildings, and yet a modern infrastructure along with it of, of all the kids. There's just, you know, it, with other big developments, this town is going to have eventually, as we have come to find out, more development than all the rest of the state put together. You just happen to end up in a town like this. And Woodmont's project is going to be huge. What, already a million square feet or so is going to, is going to be going right near the airport, and that's only the beginning of what will happen in that whole valley. And what's happened is the character and the history and what a lot of people came here for, why we came up, was for this little new, even though it's old, that this, what I think is the new center of town, where it used to be, that has, that needs some work as well, but you have the infrastructure here of why people want to be here. Woodmont, if this town wasn't careful in keeping the center special and historical and a place for people to spend time, they'd all eventually start spending their time over there. And, and you'd see the town shift again in terms of where people would spend their time. This way, with a welcoming center, you, you have a chance to remain, not just a, like a Sturbridge Village, but a real living, working area that, that the young people can, can be involved in.
Yeah. We actually, we've been working on this for, for a long time to...
And you've done a good job.
Preserve the, the central character of the town.
It's incredible.
The town. The only problem is that it attracts a lot of people also, so it has, there's, has its good things and it has its bad things. We try to create a balance, as we've been working hard at, is getting...
Yeah. You've done a great job. That's why I have made this my, my, my last move in life.
Okay. I'll go to staff. John?
Thank you. I'm going to just comment on the conceptual, the plan that was submitted and, and some of the, the information that was submitted with the, the application for zoning, rezoning. Richard, again, on the existing farmhouse with the office, that apartment, how many bedrooms is that going to have?
Two.
Two bedrooms in that one?
The most.
And how about the, how about the, the main house?
What do you mean?
Your, your home.
My home will have two.
Will have two? And then, then you had said the...
My daughter in the middle would have three.
Was three, yeah. And then the apartment out back?
And in the back, I can do a lot of different things. We could make three of my grand, granddaughters, three girls, and then there's one boy. But they've all never had their own bedrooms, so I, so for that reason, I would like to have each one of them have a bedroom of their own.
Like a five-bedroom.
So that would be five.
Yeah.
At least that's the plan. We could change it, but that's, it works fine design-wise.
So we're talking a total of like fourteen bedrooms on the, on the lot?
Twelve. Wait a minute.
Two, two, three and five.
Two, four, I think, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve.
Two, three, two, five, twelve. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications though, to Richard, again, this is all technical.
I understand.
Yep.
But at least my other two grandchildren in California, they're not willing to come here, but they're going to miss out.
One thing that I was familiar with is, again, that, that lot size. When I had come to town, they were finishing off the Presbyterian site plan up to the, to the east, so I know that that lot was less than a, an acre in size. So I know that the information that was submitted, but again, it, it should be just noted that obviously whenever the, the final plan comes in, it would be based on the size of the lot itself.
Yeah, I just found out that myself when we bought it.
Can I finish, Richard?
I thought it bought a little over an acre. I just wanted you to know that we thought we bought an acre.
Yeah. Thank you. Again, just a couple of, another couple of comments. Again, in the information that was submitted, it indicate they would be connecting to the abutting septic system to the east, or excuse me, to the west. I know Jeff Lewis was the, the design engineer for the, the Orchard Christian Church. Now again, Jeff, my recollection, that was sized up for the three hundred seats in that church today, so that would require an expansion on that septic system as long as, and, and obviously meeting all the appropriate setbacks and whatnot. A comment to the, to the plan itself, it indicates that there's two entrances off of Pillsbury Road. Again, as far as Public Works is concerned, and I, I think Staff would, is concerned, we'd look to eliminate one of those entrances off of Pillsbury, again, for access control onto the Pillsbury in that, that busy area. The access, the width of the access, and I understand this is just a conceptual plan, but again, those widths do not meet our, our standards. I would question again that the, the drainage, I know in, in the, the information that was submitted indicate to the east of this particular parcel, there's a, there's a detention pond associated with the Presbyterian Church. Again, that, that area is, is upgrading from this parcel, so obviously drainage is going to be something that's, we'll have to take a hard look at. And lastly, again, just, you know, again, I, I understand it's conceptual, but two of these buildings is less than fifteen feet of separation and one building is less than twenty, twenty feet of, yeah, two of them are less than fifteen, two of them are less than twenty feet of separation. I believe the fire department's looking for at least twenty or maybe even thirty feet, so it's something that maybe you might need a little more elbow room out there. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, John. Cynthia?
From the planning perspective, we think that this vision is very much in keeping with the master plan vision. It's a really good way to bring what I'm going to call life into the town center in terms of having people living here, which we don't have. It's kind of sporadic and the more people that you bring into the town center, the, I think, the more sustainable it's going to be in the long run, that there's more investment in the town center. This does it in a way that's reminiscent of farmhouse, farmhouse expansion of the past, where you started the road and you kind of expand backwards. It's a good way to bring affordable, walkable, all of the things, you know, mixed use. It brings, it allows a live-work situation, all of the things that, you know, I keep hearing when I go to planning conferences. I just think it's a real asset to the community. So yes, there are some hurdles, because it doesn't meet our current regulations the way it is and our current ordinances. But another message that I've been hearing going to planning conferences is that if, you need to tailor your regulations to fit the vision of the community. And I recall working years ago in Hollis, there are people surprised for plans that came to the planning board that didn't meet that vision and they, they were, they were perplexed. And you have to point out that, that's what your regulation requires. You require deep setbacks and all of these things that don't give you what you have in the center of your town. And so anyway, for those reasons, we think this is definitely what you would expect to see in the center of a town, in any community, but I think it's a welcome addition to Londonderry.
Okay. I will do the, do the board. Our master plan is fairly fresh. It was adopted in March of two thousand thirteen, which we previously had spent probably about two years in the development with a lot of community input. And actually before then, our two thousand four master plan, there's a section on page four dash eight of the two thousand four master plan that encourages development to be consistent with the area's historic character. And this is referenced to the center of town. Talks about the town common to increase in size, increase, increase use to the common and town forest, and identify the need for enhanced bandstand, consider increasing the size of the town common, and allow some small-scale commercial use. And I'll quote from this, it says, "With the exception of Max Farm Stand, there are no existing commercial uses in the town center area. However, a small amount of commercial development could serve to complement the abundance of civic resources in the town center. For example, the town could encourage reuse of the Grange for commercial purposes and consider adaptive reuse of existing homes along Mammoth Road. If the town common was realigned, there would be further opportunity to add buildings..." I'll put the page here, "...and complimentary uses, that is a coffee shop. Areas to consider for new structures include the edge of the existing orchard behind the Grange or reuse of some of the civic structures in the area at a future point when these buildings pass their structural relevance. In any case, all commercial uses should be tightly regulated in terms of architectural design, site location, coordination with the surrounding resources, as maintaining the historical character of the area, density, use and consistent with the needs of the area of the town." And it talks about, a little bit about traffic. But this actually was in its gestation period back in early two thousands, two thousand three, two thousand four. And I went back, took a look at the ninety-seven master plan. It doesn't really talk in specifics, but it does mention to enhance the central area of town and preserve the character. So there's a consistency, you know, probably over the last, I'd say probably approximately, you know, twenty years. So that's a little perspective on, on where we are with the master planning and with the direction of the town. And we've, feel we've done a good, good job and we want to continue that anyway. So I'll start with Chris, we'll go through the board. I'd rather the microphone, because Mary's not here to chase me.
You push it back. I would echo what Cynthia was saying and your comments from the master plan. It seems like this checks off a lot of boxes on, on the master plan, objectives. And, you know, this seems to fit that, that, you know, the vision that was in there for this area of the town. And, you know, the, the nature of the, you know, the character of the, the development looks sort of like how it would have developed naturally over years from a, you know, a house close to the road with buildings appended to the, to the rear of it. I know that my father-in-law had a house like that in Rockport, Maine, and it was that way. There was a barn and an L and an attachment to the L, so it sort of stretched out further, further to the back of the property. So it seems to have that flavor and I, I, the, the other aspect I think is the fact that you're looking to preserve the original structure at the beginning front there. That's another objective in the master plan that we want to encourage. So it seems like you're checking off a lot of boxes there, notwithstanding the devil being in the details that, you know, there will be concerns for the fire department trying to fit so much into such a small space. But, you know, in general, I would say it looks like something we would want to have there.
Okay. Thanks. Rick?
I'm all set.
Yeah, all set. Jim?
Yeah. Bill, what is your experience and who have you worked for before?
I, my, my bag is, I, I implement ideas that Richard comes up with. Richard plants the seeds that, thank God, fertilize the world. And so my background is building, implementing other guys' ideas. But I have most recently done a lot of work done in, in Boston. I just finished the planning of an apartment house in, across the street from the John Hancock Building, which is probably the most successful apartment house ever built in Boston financially, aesthetically, and just, just a place to live these days. I've also done, oh, I did, I built in the construction business, Southern Hampshire Technology Park, Harvey Road, which at that time were a couple of buildings. Did the Coca-Cola Building over in West Manchester, just off the old Route ninety-three over there, Hampshire Plaza downtown Manchester. Whole odds and ends from Channel Building coming from Andover. Did about, the last four or five years, did about forty life science startups in Kendall Square, Bailey Interior Designs, I don't know, the National Grid Headquarters down at Route one twenty-eight in Wall Fam, Converse Network Systems in Wakefield. I don't know what, Mass Senior, Huntington Avenue down in the Longwood Medical Area. Currently working on a apartment development in downtown Winchester, which is a small, Winchester, Mass, a small twelve, eighteen apartments in the middle of Winchester. So...
Lincoln Labs.
Yeah, I did the Lincoln Laboratory for MIT down at Hanscom Air Base in Lexington. So you name it. I've been around the track a few times, mainly construction and design.
Richard, our master plan, I think, has been well thought out. This is probably the toughest area to really start with, because it's, it's the historical fabric of this town. And there will be debates on what people want there. I mean, we do have a vision and a vision is a vision, doesn't mean that's the way it's going to end up, but it makes us move forward. And this is a, I, from the residents that I've talked to, this area is like a target. It's a bullseye. So I'm very open-minded. I think that this is, could fit, fit well, but it has to fit properly. And I think that it's a, it's a good, it's a good concept. At the very least, I don't think there are many people in town that would, would not want that house to be saved and preserved.
That house is an eyesore.
It is now.
No doubt.
And it's, and it's dangerous. No, it is now, but it will, it will be as beautiful as the day was built in the eighteen eighties. So I think that's something everybody could agree with in town.
That's true.
I did cut down the bushes in front, because they were starting to grow into the foundation. And the Presbyterian Church helped me get up on the roof. They brought over a big ladder and I climbed up to get all that plastic that was hanging down, it sort of looked like, or we got it all done before Easter, so they could have a nice event across the street and not have the haunted house there. So we made a little bit of an improvement.
Handy for Halloween.
Well, it'd be great for that. And, and just curious, what type of construction timeframe do you see this project going through? Will it be a two-year period? Will it be a one-year period? A one year. One year for complete build-out? Sure.
I think, I think, I think it's more like eleven months of that, thereabouts.
Okay. You know, Bill's pretty organized and, and my...
With permits in hand.
Yeah. And my team is organized, so, you know, and it's a work of love for us, so we'll be right on top of it. But the, the thing I'm mostly concerned about is saving the house. And if you were to go in in a rainstorm in there, I mean, there's nothing I can do. It, it just has to be, in fact, you know, we're going to have to take off the roof, all new electrical cores and plumbing, but the siding is all lead paint, so I've got to replace all of that. And you wonder, well, what's left? But there are some good bones inside and we want to just make sure it is, is stabilized. So our timing is based on getting moving, so that we can get moving with that. It's not cost-effective just to do that.
Richard mentioned, excuse me a second, Richard mentioned the Concord Barn down on Virginia Road in, in Concord, which is the, the red barn you see at the opening lines of the Ossisole House, and that's where they filmed the event upstairs there. That was in much worse condition. It was an old barn, maybe two hundred years old. And at that time, I was working with a fellow named Dick Spaulding, the old Spaulding, in the Sly days, and we imported carpenters from, from the Northeast Kingdom in Vermont to come down and bring their lumber with them. And they worked four twelve-hour days. They actually brought their pickup trucks down, camp on site and built that, working out four twelve-hour days a week and then took Friday off and went back home. But that was done, gee, that was, must have been, and that was actually enlarged, which is, I don't know how many square feet it is, but was done in six months from start to finish. It was really terrible, but now it's a pretty decent...
I hold Bill to that, because he's the project manager. He's the one that would build this. And, you know, it's kind of funny, the, the, the electrical union here, up here, a lot of the members actually live in town. They volunteered to do all the electrical work without charging, other than for materials, as trying to make a statement in town of how they really want to be doing more. And, and so they volunteered to, to do work and they brought the other unions. And I met with all the different union members, and I've been very friendly with the carpenters' union in Massachusetts over the many years. I, I developed the Boston Design Center down in the waterfront, and they were there. So that's how I got to know them. But they all want to participate and, and help build this, get this house restored at the center of town, just because they think it's that important. So, and they're really into the, this whole house thing with the high school kids, so they've, and they volunteered. So it's, it's kind of brought a lot of people together, the, some members of the, of the... Some members of the Orchard Church are here, and they've been, you know, they've been really doing everything they can do to help make this happen. So we've, you know, that's all I can tell you, you know. But I think we'd all be proud of this, and it's the first thing I, my family and my team hope to do in this town of many things in the future.
Thank you. All set, Jim? Yep. Okay, John?
Thank you. So, yeah, Bill, your reputation proceeds, proceeds, you believe me. I know some of the work that you've done, very impressive stuff. And I'm actually excited to think that you're proud of this. Coming into this, quite honestly, I'm a bit skeptical because I also see what the zoning has to be.
Right.
And obviously, there's concern there as far as, you know, I think it was brought up by Art earlier, about what happens to the property long-term. What does this do for us as far as opening up a gateway, so to speak? So we let it go here, we rezone it this way here, we're going to be asked to zone, you know, other parcels similarly, right? So there's obviously some discussion that has to go on there, and we need to understand how that's going to work long-term, right? Because I think, you know, your passion for the community, what you see as far as live and work and so forth, I think, you know, you've articulated it very well as to what we're trying to achieve, right? Unfortunately, I think over time, we may not be so lucky. So, you know, we need to make sure that we do everything possible to ensure that we're not only working with you, but we're also thinking about people we're not even working with at this particular point. And to get the concerns of, you know, those that are skeptical about it. I mean, I had one, a long-term member in front of the school board the other day, Mr. Clark. And Mr. Clark was passionate about keeping it the way it is, right? And, you know, hopefully, if Mr. Clark is watching, he sees what you're about to do here, would like to do here, and would be appreciative of it. So, you know, it's a double-edged sword, if you would, right?
I think there used to be more on the site at one time. I think there was a barn or something there.
Probably where the parking lot is, right? It looks like there was probably something back there at some point. I like the, I like the concept. Again, I think it falls in line with our master plan. I think it falls in line with the usage. It's good to see that you want to put your family on there and so forth, and that's good. But again, I think we need to be very cautious into what we, what we do here and we set the right tone moving forward. Secondarily, I also heard, you know, dealing with, I think it was Cynthia that was talking about how to deal with the planning and so forth. And I, again, I think we need to, you know, deal with certain issues that this lot brings to it to basically get the right curb effect and the right look and feel that we want and be mindful of that. Meaning, you know, let's not bite our nose out despite our face you go away because we didn't, you know, help you along the way. And then we're stuck with a house that's falling down, we mow it down, and the next thing you know, we have Dunkin' Donuts trying to go in there, right? I mean, those types of things. So, you know, I want us to also to, the board to be mindful of those types of things as well.
We were worried about our legacy. I just wanted to mention that the, both congregations on either side of us had to approve this, every person in each church. And along with that, they wanted a legal agreement. They came up with, their law firm, She and Finney came up with the idea first. That's the, I think it was the Orchard Church's lawyer. And so they have some control over the future, long after we're here, or I'm here. And they, they control, they have the right to buy it. They will get notification, they have the right to make a big deal out of anything that ever happens there if it's not going to be, not going to be honored and different uses come in that are objectionable to the community. So you have that extra guidance. It's all in a legal agreement. And I gladly did it, you know, tied it up that way so that it would be more of a legacy and stay the way it is. And if anybody, I really invite anybody here that's interested in historic preservation some point, I'll give them the phone number and the head of the Historic Preservation Commission, I haven't even told them, but give them a call. You will see, you know, how they and we cooperated to do some wonderful things in the last town I looked in.
And I firmly believe from what I'm seeing right now that that's pretty factual. But again, given, you know, the depth and breadth of work that both you have done. John, you'd brought up number of bathrooms?
Number of bedrooms.
Bedrooms, bedrooms, excuse me, bedrooms, drive, I believe the septic, right? That's why you were doing that count. And the intention here is that they're going to be co-sharing the existing?
That was the information that was submitted with the application.
Can you explain that to me a little bit more and us a little bit more about what that means? Because it sounds, it sounds like there'd be no septic on this particular site that is its own. And I also know, based on the plans for the church, that the church has expansion plans. And I also know that there was some talk about easement to a sewer connection through the school. So is this just a timing issue or is this something that we're really pushing the boundaries on as far as, you know, co-share of this type of, you know, I don't know if I want to use the word facility or infrastructure, but, you know, kind of explain that to us a little bit.
Well, again, all I was basing it on is the narrative that was submitted with the application. And what, as it indicates, says the site will be served by public water and sewer. Is proposed to be connected to the oversized commercial septic system recently constructed the Orchard Christian Church site with plans to eventually connect to the public sewer system. So again, all I'm, again, so the reason why I was asking about the number of bedrooms is because the septic system is typically based on the, on the number of bedrooms. So again, they're proposing no septic system out there. Obviously, the more bedrooms, the worse the soil is, the bigger the field has to be. We're on Hampton Beach, you've got nice sandy soils, the smaller the system. So my point was, is really, again, the church to the west, that, my recollection, that septic system was designed for the 300-seat church, which is what exists there today. They do have future plans to, they would have to expand it when they put on the school and whatnot. Those two additional phases to the, to the church itself. So as it's, in my mind, right now, if Richard was to tie into that system, they needed to expand that system. Or he gets an easement from them and builds its own septic system on their lot.
Where did we leave the connection with the sewer? I know there was some easement.
What that was all about is, again, Jeff was a design engineer for the church. They had looked at as far as the possibility of tying into the municipal sewer, which is basically runs to the kindergarten. So that is doable as far as gravity and whatnot, and the capacity, we have the capacity in that line. But again, at the time, my understanding, at the time that the church was constructed, the cost of connecting to the municipal sewer would have, was much greater than building their own onsite septic system. So again, as far as when and if they ever tie into that, again, it's really their call. You know, do they do it when the field fails or when they finally decide, let's just bite the bullet and get out of the septic business and we'll pay the town to take care of their wastewater.
Okay. And last question, parking for that, the way it's designed or proposed?
For what, this one?
Yeah, for this layout, is that adequate or?
Well, again, just looking at it, it appears that the parking spaces are adequate. Again, it's just the width of the driveway, you know, along the west side. I'm scaling it off the conceptual, it's like 14 feet wide. You know, again, you can fit one car through there at a time. You know, typical, typical lane is, you know, even in a commercial entity like Benson's, you know, 11 feet, you know, 22 feet is a minimum width of the aisleway so two cars can pass.
So that's considered commercial?
That's commercial. This is a residential.
So, so from what I understand, what you're trying to do is get it zoned commercial to get the layout that you want on it, but you're kind of working with residential numbers?
Well, it's mostly residential.
It's residential. The, this is in the AR-1 zone, which wouldn't permit multiple buildings. And it had a slew of other problems. And so looking at what opportunities we have in our current zoning, because, because we haven't gotten to the point where we've looked comprehensively at what the recommendations of the master plan are and changed our regulations accordingly. The C4 zone, in my mind, is almost, I mean, it's designed to provide for mixed-use, smaller level, commercial, in some cases, live-work. We had an example of that last year for the party that came in and asked for residential upstairs and commercial downstairs closer to the 102 area.
Yeah, behind Dunkin's, I think, right on?
Yeah, behind Dunkin' Donuts, exactly. This also met, if you look at what C4 allows, it's smaller sizes, smaller footprints, not-so-tall buildings, and it limits the uses. And I think through the cycling process, you can even be more limiting in terms of what you say the commercial use can be, because I don't think you would for the residential necessarily. So again, it fits the master plan, and that's what we have, that's the tool we have now that they can work under. And it doesn't match the setbacks and the buffer requirements because those were established for commercial uses, where this property really is primarily residential and wouldn't look or feel any different to anybody else than anyone who had a home occupation as far as the intensity of the use there, except for the invitation for everybody to show up at his, at his office. That's a little unusual.
So, so let me ask a question a different way. Is there a, is, do we have a zoning gap?
We do. I believe, we definitely have a zoning gap, and we're learning that as we're going through this audit. There are, there are, there's a desire and a vision that's expressed, and that's not just here, it's other parts of the community that's not necessarily addressed in the zoning ordinance and certainly not in the regulations that we need to, we need to work on, but...
Why wouldn't you just zone this multifamily, multi-dwelling?
Multifamily, multifamily wasn't, didn't work, and I can't recall exactly what those, I'd have to read it and tell you why. That was the first thing that we looked at, was R3.
Also, because of the office component?
Well, that was part of it, yeah. It's unusual to have a commercial use and...
Residential.
And I think that multi-fam, designating this lot multifamily didn't feel right to me. And maybe C4 could be named something different, or moving forward in the future, C4 becomes that residential mixed-use or neighborhood mixed-use commercial so that it's more aptly named and more appropriate. And that some of the details of it, like setbacks and buffers, fit this situation. And then there's another kind of multi, or C4-like zone for situations like the one behind Dunkin' Donuts, where you've got a lot, you've got more intense multifamily adjacent to that, and plus you've got major commercial right on the other edge. So, you know, we have different situations, and we've learned that not one size fits all, but we also don't want to create rules that are so specific that we've got 50 different zones in town, too.
No, but it sounds like, you know, my first question was, do you think we have a zoning gap? And your first answer was yes, right? Then I asked, why didn't we go multifamily, multi-dwelling? Because it didn't feel right. I'm not sure what feel means, but, and then we had, you know, commercial, we're going the other way with the commercial, and you're saying, that doesn't feel right. You know, is this something, for this particular, and I think, going back to my original statement about making sure that we're very careful about how we set our, you know, we set our future with this, because this is really going to start driving that. Does it make sense to kind of work on something like that that fits this type of model and, you know, kind of use it to drive the zoning for this particular piece of property?
This property and other properties that are like it, with the exception that we haven't done that yet, and here's an opportunity for this particular property owner to do something that he can't afford to wait for us to catch up to, if that makes sense.
One question, but, okay, so I agree with you there because I don't, I don't particularly care to stall out, you know, the development of this particular project. And he's going to go for a zoning variance?
He's going to go for a zoning amendment, which would be recommended by the board. The other option is to retain AR-1, and it would require a number of more variances, multiple buildings, just all kinds of things that seemed a lot more onerous and a lot more restrictive than this particular...
Yeah, what I'm driving at is, how do we give him, because I like what's going on, I think, I think this is, this is exactly the right fit and it's the, you know, the right form. But at the same time, how do we, how do we move ahead with what we need to do to fix that zoning gap and then maybe put this in that zoning gap? Is that possible?
Yes, it is, and we are moving that way. We're doing, we're doing the audit right now. When we get to the end of the audit, we'll have recommendations for how we, the planning board can proceed, and there'll probably be multiple options. And this is definitely one of them, is our situations like this. And then the next step is to rewrite the code to meet the vision, and that includes the master plan vision, if that helps.
Okay. Chris, following on from John's comments, one of the questions, and we're being asked tonight to make a recommendation to the council, right? That's one of the things for a zoning change, not just the discussion of the conceptual, that's one of the items that we've been asked to push forward today. So, in that light, what are the permitted uses for C4?
We provided that on...
We've got the conceptual, but we would be asking for a zoning change, and that would have that impact.
I got a list here, I took from the tables.
Thank you.
Done your homework.
What C4 is, multifamily dwelling requires a conditional use permit. Single-family dwelling, that requires a conditional use permit. Two-family dwelling, that requires a conditional use permit. Elderly housing, mixed-use residential. Community center, which requires a conditional use permit. Public facility, which requires a conditional use permit. Religious use facility. Adult daycare, which is, requires a conditional use permit. Group children care center, which requires a conditional use permit. Motor vehicle station, which requires a conditional use permit. But that's asterisk also because it has to, because it involves motor vehicles, it's a whole nother thing. Retail sales up to 75,000 square feet. Professional office, repair services, and restaurant, which requires a conditional use permit.
It's interesting that they, that you can put something up to 75,000 square feet, but you're not allowed to have a building greater than 3,500 square feet in footprint. So those are the kinds of inconsistencies that we're noting as we go along here.
And even in this, is an inconsistency, which is kind of a characteristic of our current zoning.
So could I say, in general, that the lot size would not allow itself to the one egregious one, which is 75,000 for a thing? And that, you know, C4 would still allow the planning board a high latitude of control?
Yes, that's all the conditional use permits for us, for us.
Yeah, those conditional use permits would allow us that granularity control. Should it get rezoned and then this development not go through, we've got to deal with it's now rezoned to C4. So we've got, stood a lot of control there.
Within the Mammoth Road corridor, there's one other C4 zone. That's the Shasta Drive where the...
The Country Store?
Country Store is. And then actually, it's C3 for the next one up at Nutfield Publishing. Although I thought that was always C4, but it's C3. So, you know, there is precedent for smaller lot, commercial within this more or less center-of-town area.
That's what the, this is designed, because all we had was initially C1, C2, C3.
Right.
Really could do much with that if someone wanted, you know, you know, both residential and, you know, small office space. So, you know, we worked at that for a while. And, you know, I think Mohawk Drive down there, someone was interested in C4 also.
Yeah, that's what, it was rezoned to that, probably a year and a half ago.
So, so C4 is a little bit of a hybrid, which is getting us into this, you know, mixed, mixed-use type of thing. And this is probably, it goes about 10 years ago, I think, what C4 came about. Okay. Scott?
Conceptually, I like it. I like the preservation of the historic site. My only concern really is like the total building square footage, 11,285 on a 43,000 square foot lot. But otherwise, I like it. I think it's a better use than something else going in there commercially where you're just going to have a small office. So I think it kind of preserves the integrity of the village center. That's it.
Okay. Lynn? Do you have any calculations yet on how much impervious space you'd be putting on the lot? Do you have any calculations yet on how much impervious space you'd be putting on the lot in addition to the housing?
Well, again, we're very interested in organic and sustainable practices. The driveway will be pervious material, not impervious, because of that. And the rest will just be plantings. I don't know if you're aware, on both sides, I guess they're not on our property, but there are gigantic gullies that are there. They've overgrown. But the one between the old church and our property is, was sized much bigger even to take care of that new parking lot they built. And, but we, we want to preserve as much of the organic everything that's there and what we plant, how we do it. We're going to be doing some experimenting. We actually have, have some people at Stony Field that have offered to help, because we're, everything we plan to do is going to, in our developments. And even this, as an example, will be all the practices of preserving the Mother Earth. And so, we're going to be very careful with the materials. So, we, that's all I can say. I don't know what the percentages are.
I think the percentages here are, there's the building coverage and landscaped area.
Okay. Landscaped area, 57%. Building coverage, 15%, according to that calculation Bill has.
This is part of our application.
It's in our application.
So, the driving areas, the parking areas, housing, roughly 43% of the lot?
Well, landscaped is 57%. At least 43% left, of which the building coverage is about 15. So, let's see, 43 minus 15 is 30 something.
And the paving would be the other remaining part.
And we hope to keep that opening in the very back of the property, between that property and the old church. There's a opening, because that's where the cars would drive through. They have a barrel there.
Yeah, there's an opening back there.
Yeah. And we would widen it somewhat, and so, a fire truck could go in one side and down, or they can go in the front and out through that big parking lot. And we, we're sure the church will work that out with us, so we can keep that open. I just wanted to mention with the sewer, we have our engineer here who designed and built the sewer. And we have the building committee members, or one of them, two of them, from the Orchard Church here. Our plan would be to connect to that. We can expand their septic system, but we're going to join with them to pay for the connection as soon as they want to do it, to the real sewer from the septic. And because of the unusual ratio of houses versus a big congregation in a church, we're probably close to half the cost that we would pay. And that would help, because the church didn't do it before because of cost. And if we were contributing a significant amount, we'd be able to get that done sooner than later. So, that's, that's to answer that. But he's the technical guy.
Yeah, we're still pretty conceptual. Now, we're going to be getting into, I'm sure if this continues, into the details.
And I'll take a drive down there in the next couple of days, actually. But it's kind of, my first guess, or my first thought is, I wasn't expecting to see this layout when I came into the meeting tonight. And I like the layout. It looks like there's a lot of stuff being put onto a small footprint. That's my only concern. And I would like to see it in the context of what's around it as well, just to get a better feel for how it fits in with what's there right now. I just don't have that in my mind. Going back to the zoning issues, if we made a recommendation for a zoning change today, can it be made contingent on us approving a site plan? Because the zoning change would stay, if the project fell through, then we have a C4 zone area there.
We'd have a C4 zone, and that's something that we'd have to, we'd have to deal with. That goes with the property. It can always be changed, always can change back if that's the desire of the property owner. Or, and usually, is that the request of the property owner that zoning changes come about?
And then, would we face any spot zoning arguments? Because it's going to be that small parcel in the middle of a huge AR1 area.
The reason, that's the reason I mentioned the, the other two zones, commercial zones that appear to be spot-zoned. The nature of this is that it's not, it may be in the AR1 zone. It's not surrounded by anything residential whatsoever. They have a very kind of public, semi-public institutional neighborhood around them. And personally, I think the residential is the minority here. So, to restrict that because it's in an AR1 zone is probably not the best reason.
But in terms of setting precedent, and was Nutfield built prior to zoning? And it was zoned...
Nutfield originally was in there on a variance.
Was it okay?
Yes. And then, I think...
They're C3. They're not even C4, they're C5.
But, you know, in terms of using them as an example, I know they've been there a long time, and I just wasn't sure if they predated zoning or not.
They were interested in C4, I know, at the time, because they were contemplating gasoline pumps. But there wasn't the land for the tanks, and also, it was very, very wet, so it wasn't workable. So, that's why it stayed as C3. But they were very interested in C4. And I think, well, the, it was John Michaels was their attorney, and I think he worked with us on some of the C4. We developed the C4. And I think there were some other landowners that were interested also with Mohawk Drive area. Interested in that.
When you drive in, I hope you all get a chance. And if anybody wants a tour of the inside of the house, it, I'm not sure the insurance covers it, but you're free to, you're free to have the tour, because there's a lot of historical stuff to save in there. But it is filled with old Boy Scout stuff and the church pews that came out of the building.
Right, and the Historical Society would be interested, I think, looking at that place with me.
I would love, I would love to give a tour, but again, there's holes in the first floor. But if you're careful, anytime anybody wants to see it. But you'll be surprised when you drive in as to how big that land is, how it looks.
43,000 square feet, right?
Well, but it's all barren.
I understand.
And it already has this multiple use of the residential, not prairie dogs, but groundhog city that's there in the big lawn, in back of the house, yeah. And there's a crazy-looking cat that lives in the basement of the house. It must have been living outside for its whole life. And, you know, it's, it could use, like sheep, sheep farmer, sheep cutting it. But it lives in the basement, going in and out, and we have to deal with that. But it's bigger than you think. When you go in there, you'll see it's gigantic.
So, I, you know, my thought right now is, I like the concept. I think there's some details that need to be worked out.
Can I ask? Oh, Joe. Do you mind, Letha, just one second? On the, the variance for the rezoning, Lynn brings up a very good point as far as, you know, if we okay it, and the plan doesn't go through, then he could sell the property off as a commercial piece of property, and then, we're dealing with whatever someone wants to put on there. Is there any way to put the cart before the horse as far as having a plan submitted and okayed, and then go for the zoning? Kind of do it backwards? And the reason for that is, I just want to make sure that...
Contingent on the rezoning.
Contingent, yeah, contingency or contingent rezoning, or something along those lines to ensure that, you know, we don't just rezone it, and then, we're kind of stuck with it as, as how it's zoned.
I think you could.
Yeah, I think it's something to check, or maybe with our attorney, we could just make sure we could do it that way.
It would be incredibly expensive to do all the plans and everything first. I mean, finish everything, and then, I mean, Bill, maybe you shed some light on that.
Well, the, well, the site engineering and the architecture and design, all the engineering for that matter, to get through a site plan, a submission would be kind of pricey without knowing what zone to design it within. You know what I mean? It's an envelope that the design fits within with the several variances and setbacks and lot coverages and blah, blah, blah. It's kind of like, would be kind of expensive to do otherwise, and then find out later on, well, you really ought to be in a C3 zone or something else, when, you know, the design is customized to the zones, form, fall, as function zone.
This is our first, first attempt to do something in this town, and I hope we're going to be doing a lot more. And we really want to do this all right. We are, I did move up here to be part of the community, so I live here now. And my family's here, and I want to bring more up. But we're somewhat controlled by not, by this, by having the two churches, expecting this to be done a certain way as well. And we have, have to notify each one if there's any thought of any change or to do anything. And we're, we're not interested at all in flipping this or not, not doing it. We're going to need a place to live. We're renting. So, this is where we want to be. So, I don't know how to guarantee it, but...
We can do that. I'm remembering, I'm trying to recall, this is your predecessor, Cynthia, Tim Thompson. I think he had attached the zoning with the site plan. And I think our attorney at the time, Bart Mayer, said, "You really can't do that." And I think before we say anything, I think we'd want to check with, like, Ramstow, with our current attorney.
I sure will do that.
Yeah, I would like, as I have, at least take a look at that. And again, I understand it's pricey to do those things, but, you know, as you pointed out earlier when you started, it was really around, you know, we've been very amenable to working with you, and staff has been very good, and I think that would continue even through that process, right?
And we expect the same when we start working with the Heritage?
Heritage Commission.
Commission. We hope to work hand-in-hand with them, getting their advice and ideas, and together, making sure this thing really is, is in the image of what everyone wants.
You get plenty of ideas there, too. Okay, I'll continue with Letha.
Welcome back, Mr. Flyer. It's nice to see you again. Mr. Flyer was a fixture at our master plan meetings. But I have to say that he spent the majority of the time listening, really listening to the town folks. And I think that's really important. I think it, it just kind of adds additional validation to all the things he's told us here tonight. So, I won't, I won't beat the dead horse. That kind of seems to be the theme here. I, I, you know, clearly, the devil is in the details. I love your design. I think if, if there's ever a vision that has something that truly plays to what the town would like to see there, I mean, this is certainly what we heard in this master plan, and it sounds like in previous master plans, which I wasn't a part of, it sounds that this is quite lovely for that, that area. Like Lynn and all the rest, yes, I think that it will be challenging to get, to see how that would play in that space. I do like the fact that that barn, as you call it, in the back, abuts the, the field to the school back there. I like additional eyes, if you will, out on the school field. I like that. I don't, forgive me, I didn't realize it was public, private property, but every Sunday, when my children get out of Sunday school, before they get out of Sunday school, I'm there with my dog, and I do pick up, by the way. And that property in there is, is really beautiful, but it is very overgrown, and that's, you know, that's always a concern. So, it would be nice to see some things out there that are adjacent to the school for more eyes in the rear of the school. I would like that. But I think it's lovely. It's a really nice idea. Thank you.
Hey, Maria.
Yeah, I mean, I echo a lot of things that everybody has said here. I'm having a hard time. I haven't been on that property in a long time. I do remember parking back there, overflow from the church, church, the original LPC up the hill. I can't picture all of this on there. I'm under an acre, I'm trying to picture it. But I do, I do think it, I do think the, the way that you have the buildings and the design does fit in that spot well. I do, I do think it's a lot of buildings for that, that one area, but not to say that it can't work. My question is, the C4 zone, being that that's a zone in itself, if, if, say, down the road, way down the road, one of your children, grandchildren took over the property someday, could the residential homes be commercial under that zone? Like, if, if the homes in the back, the residential homes, if they, if they, if an antique shop wanted to go in there, or if that, could that be turned into a... No, but I'm just saying, and I'm not talking about all that. I'm just talking about, could the uses be changed within those residential homes under the C4?
It would be subject to planning board approval. Obviously, would have to meet the criteria for additional residential, commercial. I think you structure the site plan approval to really limit it to, to what you see here, that you can just even probably say a ratio of residential to commercial and to maintain what you've got going on here. I don't think they're going to have the parking that would be required for the sort of things that you're mentioning. So, I think it's pretty much self-limiting in how it's set up now.
Okay. I was just curious about uses later on, because, again, like we mentioned before, I mean, if this property was to be sold with this vision and this design, you know, there may not be so many other people out there that would, you know, want this compound, you know, if you will, type of vision. So, I just think about that part of it.
As time goes on, maybe one of our children would move. But we'll lease, that house will be available for lease to anybody in the community.
That's true.
And that's the intention, is if we owned, think of this as an apartment building. You know, we had four units. I mean, it would just be rental. And the, you know, the bank is going to require certain, certain standards as well in terms of how they're going to lend on this.
And that would be acceptable under the zoning, right?
Well, and future changes of use are under your purview as a planning board, so you have, you have control over that.
Right.
Okay.
We sure won't encourage anything.
No, I mean, you know, I love your idea and family and community and historical. I love the idea of all that. I'm just, I'm thinking out as to, you know, would the next owners want that, you know? But, you know, like you said, could be considered down the road.
It's always related to rep, parking ratio.
Right. And I'm also hoping that within the next year and a half or so, that we can get the code in order, and maybe this gets changed to a more appropriate zone that really defines what that is. That and other places that might also want to have the same kind of character, so...
Yep. But the look of it, I mean, from the vision that you have here, the look of it is very appropriate in that spot. That's for sure.
And from the street, you just see the main house and a little bit of the house, side of the house on the right.
Yeah, I'll have to take a closer look at it. I just can't picture it all in there, but...
Yeah, well, I think they, they look a little bigger than they really are. Those are pretty small shapes. And our architect only had last night, and he had some other meetings too, and he had to do this during the night to get it done, so we could have it here.
And the property is kind of down, right? Isn't it kind of lower than the church on the corner? Isn't it, right? From what I remember? Because I remember...
A little bit, a little bit. But the thing is, it's going to be also, there's a lot of hardwood trees on either side. And so, when they bloom, you won't see much of anything inside from, from any direction, really.
But even what you do see would be appropriate, because it's all going to be, the designs of the buildings are going to be...
The designs, the colors?
Mimicking what's around it, so...
Yeah. And we're going to set a standard, that they always have to be certain color. The whole system in there is going to be, have certain standards for the whole thing that we're going to institute, and we'll find any way we can to make sure it stays that way.
Well, I do, I do applaud, you know, your commitment to the community, just moving here and wanting to be a part of it, and jumping in and getting people involved. I, it's a wonderful idea if we could figure out all the details, so...
This is a wonderful community. I'm just, we're so privileged to be up here. I feel 10 years, 20 years younger, having moved here in just nine months. I'm not kidding, it just feels great.
Glad to have you. That's all for me.
Okay. Thanks, Al.
Yeah, conceptually, I kind of like the idea. I think a lot of issues could be dealt with in site plan review. One question I have, Richard, is, and this might address some of the concerns that the rest of us have, and I have, as far as in the future, what might happen, is the legal agreement you have with both churches, does it give them the absolute right to stop a future use if they don't agree with it?
No, it doesn't give them the absolute right. But it, what it does is, I'm obligated, if anyone were to come to me and want to buy this, to let them know. I'm obligated if we want to change any use. Or if we are going to sell it, we have to tell them. They don't have a right of first refusal. But I sure wouldn't want to go against either congregation. The worst thing in the world would be to have a church congregation not liking what you're going to do. But they, they've inserted themselves to be somewhat involved in what will happen in the future. Let's say I didn't have an office there, and someone wanted to come along and have something that doesn't fit in the... Let's say I didn't have an office there and someone wanted to come along and have something that doesn't fit in the center of town or in their opinion, then they have notice and say, say to the degree that they can ask me not to do it.
Well, yeah, but if you're not around, according to what you told me, they have no legal say whatsoever.
Well, that agree, the agreement, the agreement, well, and I'm, I'm not saying I'll be around forever, I'm older than most of you.
No, and I'm only bringing this, bringing this up because of some of the concerns that the board members have.
It's reality.
This is my last phase of life here, right? And, and, and I, so, we can all figure out a way, but I don't, I think you'll have control. I mean, I, I can't imagine anybody, what else would they do? Maybe a school would buy it or, or a church, but I don't know. I mean, maybe somebody that wanted to, I'm, I'm gonna have it flexible so it can be leased to others. I plan on staying, but who knows what'll happen with the kids. But the houses are small enough.
I think, I think that, that, that was the concern with a lot of the board members, if you're not around, you know, what's going to happen next?
Right, what happens next, you know?
Well, I'll have some happy kids collecting rent, I guess, you know, my, my son lives in California. He's gonna stay there, but they like farming too, his wife does. And, and so, they're gonna be so excited to be able to visit and be near an apple farm and all of the things that this town has to offer. But they're, it's basically gonna be owned in a, a family trust that all the kids will share in eventually.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
But first, they're gonna pay rent.
Gotta pay into it first.
I pay, pay for part of their college, I want to do that.
Teach them, teach them properly.
That's a scenic spot there.
Yeah, I, I think you've got a good, good flavor of, from the board. I think there's a, at least through previous master plans, there's a consistency. You know, I think what has been mentioned, it does look busy. A lot of, of the concerns, I think, are gonna be in the details. Conceptually, it, it's, it's what is probably, probably needed. I think we're gonna look at this as, as an example, a standard. We want it to work right, we want it to be perfect, we don't want to make any mistakes or anything. So, and I think there's gonna be a lot of give and take as we, as we go, go through this anyway. It's, it's like anything. I think both of us, there's, there's a good vision with this board. I mean, there's also been good, good vision as we've worked on our master plans. And I think it does fit in with that, with that vision. We just want to, you know, if, if this is gonna happen, we want it to be perfect. So that, I'm sure there's gonna be other interests also. And this'll be the, the example. So, we want to be able to control it perfectly. One of the problems with residences that are along Mammoth Road is that are residential. It's becoming more difficult for them to sell, because it's a busy road, they don't want to move in with kids. And that's where we started looking at, especially with the historic properties on Mammoth Road, is to look at mixed use between apartments and then this very small business, light commercial, you know, you know, light, you know, residential use. Because some of those properties are worth more as something, a commercial venture, even though they're zoned, currently zoned, Evercultural Residential One. This is what we're gonna have to look as things do, do develop. Because we've had one instance with Nutfield Publishing, uh, that property, which was right at the corner of Litchfield Road and Mammoth, was worth more as a, as a commercial property than the, the couple with two young kids that were trying to, trying to sell it. It did, it did work out, there was a lot, that has its own history, but we won't blot it with that.
I think we can have a lot of fun together. This is a, this is a labor of love and I don't think you're all volunteering, because you, you don't care about the town. You're here to make it better and so are we. And I, I feel privileged that our team can be part of setting a standard, because, helping to set a standard, because I think that's a great opportunity for the rest of the plan. So, we're, we're patient, there's nothing, nothing for anybody to feel badly about, we'll, we're excited about it.
Yeah, and as other towns have looked at our zoning and they tend to, well, uh, co- copy us, we've been able to at least grow successfully. We're gonna continue to grow, you can't stop growth, but you can, you can control it and you can design it, so...
But you can also preserve and save some of the wonderful things that are still here before it's too late.
Yep.
And you've done that with some of the farms and hopefully more.
Yeah, it's been, been the will of the people. I mean, they've, uh, bought us, uh, several sums of money to purchase development rights for actually three of our orchards, so... It's something the town has been intimately involved with.
Without it, I mean, I, I think the heart and soul of the town are the orchards in the center.
Yep.
And, and they're so important to find a way to keep them going into the next few generations, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of pressure from, from the federal government on, on standards for, for farms, et cetera. And, and so preserving them is gonna be a lot of work and, and worthwhile.
Yeah, that's something we, I think we all have to be very diligent to add, so... This is a conceptual discussion, but I'll, I'll see if any members of the public have any questions or comments or input for, for us. Gentlemen back there, what do you, come up to the microphone right here and I need name and address, please. And the microphone, so that people at home can, can hear what's going on.
This one here, right?
Yes, yes.
Ray Breslin, uh, 3 Gary Drive, Londonderry. I, I just wanted to mention that, and actually I, I didn't plan on being here this evening, but, uh...
Couldn't tear yourself away.
Couldn't stay away, yeah. I guess, my concern is, you know, about the town center and, and that, you know, I, I personally think that it should be kept, you know, kind of as a historic area. And this gentleman here has a vision, which i- in some, some cases seems like a very good idea. But I, I believe that is designated as a historic district, is it not?
No.
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 Any of it?
That's not in the historic district. The Town Common is in the historic district, the Town Forest is in the historic district, the Grange is in the historic district, and the Historical Society is in the historic district. That's it.
That's it, huh?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not...
It's a scenic byway. There is, that's a scenic byway.
Right, yes.
So, a- anyway, I, I just thought, with the town master plan, that is that set in stone? Or, or is that something that we're still gonna look at?
Yeah, but master plans are conceptual, they kind of look to the future or vision. It, it says you don't have to do it.
Right.
But it provides guidance, it provides a framework to which to, to build on for consistency.
Right. But, but, I mean, uh, the, the master plan is, is many pages, very long and very detailed. And, uh, you know, if, if, if the planning board or the town council, whatever, were to implement everything that's in that master plan, it, it would be astronomical and, and...
We, we don't have the time to do it, you know, there's certain things that we, we look at, especially like when rezonings come along, things like that.
Right.
We look at, you know, probably...
It's a guide.
Yes, it's like a guide.
It's a guide.
Okay, but...
We'll look, see what it says. Maybe we look at previous master plans too, believe it or not, so...
Yeah, but, but what have we established in the master plan? What specifically we're going to do with the Town Common area?
No, there's no specifics in the master plan, that's what we're in the process of...
Okay, so, I mean, shouldn't we establish that before we go and start changing the zoning?
This is what we're doing right now. We're taking, we're, you know, the master plan conceptually has taken a look at the central part of, of town.
Right.
And we've had requests come before us, you know, the first question we ask, is there consistency with the master plan? And the answer is, yes, there is a consistency with the master plan.
Yeah, even though...
Then, at that point, we look at the details of what's being proposed to us.
Yeah, but we, we have a, a committee looking at the implementation of the master plan at, at this time, correct? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that's looking at specifics.
Right.
And what they're probably be working on first, I think they're gonna look at the central area on the meeting coming up at the end of May. And then there is, uh, they'll be, we'll be looking at our total zoning ordinance that needs to be changed.
Okay, well, I, I don't want to take any more time, but I, I just think that we, we ought to establish what the town wants to do with that area of the, the common and, and the churches and so forth. You know, do we want to put in sidewalks, do we want to change the road? Do we want to, you know, put in pathways in the forest? You know, what, what do we want to do? And I think that should be established before we look at changing and doing something else.
Yeah, I think the master plan gives us a good, good direction anyway, so that's, that we find is, is helpful. We are basically the interpreters of it, so...
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Maria, yes.
I just, I just want to follow up with that. I think what I look at is that the, this lot that we're talking about, this gentleman now owns, you own this lot, right? So, this is a privately owned lot now, that you're looking to do a vision and the vision just happens to be going along with parts of the master plan vision. So, he already owns this piece of property, so we're not talking about a town-owned piece of property. So, I, 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 that's why I said I applaud the fact that he is trying to do some of the things that are in our vision of our master plan with his privately owned property. I think the Town Common piece is a whole nother story. It's, it's, it's definitely what we want to look at, but that's owned by the town. So, I think it's just two different things, I just wanted to kind of follow up.
But this house in the front, as far as I'm concerned, belongs to the town as well as us. And that's why we want to restore it, it's so important to save. And if we wait too long, it will just flatten.
Right.
And the other thing is, the rest of the lot is kind of derelict right now. It's, it's really not up to any standard. I'm embarrassed about it, 'cause it's mine now, but it's, if you, if you, the gentleman were to walk the land in the back and look at it, I can't imagine that he'd be want, wanting to have anything like that in the center of town. The house itself, I totally agree with him, you know, we're gonna restore it. And the reason we're doing it is, is for the town.
Right.
It, it doesn't make any other sense, other than it should be there, because it's one of our few precious buildings.
I just think that the, the Town Common issue is a separate issue than your piece of property that you now own. It's two different.
But I, but I agree with him on all, a lot of, a lot of those issues. I'm very concerned about the forest and what that could be and the condition of it. You know, I'm into forests.
Yeah, that's something the town is working at together on the, the town-owned properties.
Right.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
But I don't disagree with the gentleman.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am, you do come to the microphone and name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Karen Cardier. I am one of the pastors at Orchard Christian Fellowship, I'm the associate pastor. Our senior pastor is on a well-deserved vacation this week, so he couldn't be here. And I said I would come and represent him and the congregation. We are glad to have Mr. Flyer as a neighbor. We are glad for his vision. One of the most wonderful sights in Londonderry is as you come up Pillsbury, driving east on Pillsbury, and you pass the Historical Society and you see Orchard Christian Fellowship. And then behind there, you'll see Mr. Flyer's vision for what he has there and then Londonderry Presbyterian Church as well. And that's just a, a beautiful sight. So, we have in mind that he plans to continue what the Historical Society has begun and what we did as Orchard Christian Fellowship in the planning and development of our property that will add to the beauty of the town. We appreciate Mr. Flyer and just want to make that known to you personally. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just want to let you know too, I used to commute for many, many years. I'm now a resident of Londonderry, live on Litchfield Road.
Good for you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. I'll need your name and address too, please.
My name is Terry Smith. I live at 23 Palamena Lane in Bedford, New Hampshire. I'm a longstanding member of Orchard Christian Fellowship and, you know, Londonderry Presbyterian Church. And prior to, you know, that, I, you know, directed, you know, the strategic planning effort for the second strategic plan. That was the addition at the back of Londonderry Presbyterian Church. And I, you know, did the strategic plan, you know, for, you know, the Orchard Christian Fellowship, you know, property. And, you know, we, you know, tried to be very good stewards of that, you know, property. We looked to see if there were, you know, other properties in Londonderry that would be, you know, big enough, you know, for our, you know, congregation and also provide recreational areas and, you know, parking for our congregation. We could not find, you know, other areas, you know, so we were very invested in, you know, that 15-acre, you know, piece of property. And the other thing we really liked about that, it was on the, uh, the Apple Way. And we, you know, tried to be very good, you know, stewards, you know, of that. And I think that Mr., uh, you know, Flyer's, you know, project, you know, shows, you know, excellent stewardship and it's a very complimentary use, you know, for, you know, something that you would expect to appear on Londonderry's Apple Way. And then the other thing, just, you know, being, you know, a church and, you know, looking at, you know, the, you know, use, you know, we, we thought, you know, it's an incredible use that Mr. Flyer would be able to, you know, live on that property with his, you know, family members. And his family members would, you know, allow him, you know, to, to live on that property, you know, into his, you know, golden, you know, years with the support of his, you know, family. And that was important, you know, to us, you know, from, you know, a church, you know, perspective. And I've done, you know, lots of multi-use, you know, properties principally in the Houston area and, you know, Dallas and Fort Worth. You know, we, you know, worked with, um, Jack Nicholas in developing, you know, multi-use, you know, properties and his land planner, you know, Mel Lackerman. And even back in the 1980s, you know, that was a very complimentary use, you know, where he would, you know, live and work and have recreation and worship, you know, within walking distance. And, you know, you know, so, you know, this is, you know, very exciting that that concept is, you know, able to, you know, evolve, you know, to, you know, the center of, you know, Londonderry. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? Ian.
Anne Shampa, 28 Wedgwood. I'm not sure what came first, the chicken or the egg here. What I've been listening to is, um, it sounds like this master plan may have been designed around Mr. Flyer's vision of the property.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, it sounds like, I guess it sounds like you worked closely with the, um, the designers of the plan. It sounded like, what, from what I'm hearing, I didn't know that before. Okay, I forgot my stuff. I'll wait till you're done.
I think, I think there's two people here that'll correct you on that, Ian.
Probably, but that's what I was hearing.
But that's, that's, that's your opinion.
That's what I was hearing between...
But that is your opinion.
Okay, that's fine. And I am speaking as a resident.
Yes.
What I'd like to say is, I think that's what other people were saying, it's too much on too small a lot. I applaud you for, uh, trying to restore the, um, the property there, the Naylor property. My daughter went to school with Lizzy Naylor many years ago. And it's a very nice-looking house, small house, but a very nice-looking house. But all that, um, roof space, driveway space, and just the overall visual impact of all that square footage, I think is too much for that lot. I'm looking at the, um, the lot in the back, there's five foot, five feet, um, from the back lot, am I correct? Five feet setback, that's it, to the, um, school property. That's a commercial property now next to a school property. Is that something that we want in town? Because if the front area is, the whole property will be zoned, uh, commercial, can there also be commercial in the back there at a future date? I just wonder about that. I'm not saying that is, but I wonder about what else can happen on that property. If we look at the master plan, um, it does show three houses on that property now. But it also shows 17 houses around the town, around or in the Town Common. So, when we talk about the vision, I'm not sure... So when we talk about the vision, I'm not sure.
We're talking about concepts, Ian.
Right, I know, but we're talking about visions also.
And that's conceptual.
Right. And this is a concept also. It's a plan, but it's also a concept. When you talked about groundhogs, I think you'll have to get used to them. When everybody comes on the Morrison House grounds, we tell them, be careful because groundhogs love that area.
We love them.
We have many on our property at the Morrison House.
We have one in the house we're renting, in the little garage, little garden house. And it's her second year back. And last year she had about nine little groundhogs, and they live there right with us, and their heads stick out every time I pull the driveway.
And they will dig underneath your slabs and.
But in this case, they're living on a hill of fill that somebody dumped there, probably illegally many years ago.
But they will be under your slabs, too, because they are under ours.
Well, I love animals.
Yeah, let's not give too much trivia here, Ian.
We have new groundhogs coming, so they're cute.
We have animal control in town, too, so.
I know, but they're adorable, I have to tell you. And that's.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, they look good from a distance, but they'll eat your veggies and everything. But this really is not a discussion about groundhogs.
Right, I know, but they were brought up and he was mentioning it.
Yeah, we don't need to dwell on it.
I just have one question left. You were talking about the square footage. It was like 11,000? What is, if you could just give me a rough estimate of the actual, not total square footage of a house, but just like the first floor of, all the first floors, is that it?
On the two small houses, it will be around, I don't know, 1,100 feet?
Well, roughly, roughly there. These are being fine-tuned. The existing building, that is the old Naylor farmhouse, has a floor, first floor, about 1,200 square feet.
Okay.
The next building immediately behind it would have about, these are approximately 1,500 square feet, building behind that, 1,500, and the bottom building, about 2,400.
But we may downsize the two capes because that may be a little too large for our need. But 1,500 would be the only size. And then the ground floor of the barn would be eight cars.
Right. So there'll be eight cars plus.
But no garages. You know, we wouldn't take it up. In other words, that'll be the garage.
Right. So the first floor is all garage based on some storage.
Right now, it's just a gravel, a gravel driveway that's totally barren with a bunch of fill in one corner that was dumped there. And that's all you see when you go in. You should go and take a look. You're welcome to go on to the.
I've seen the house from the other side from the town forest.
The, well, I'm just saying, if you go into the property, you'll see that it's not anything any of us would be proud of. I'm not. And the, the building setback is against a hill. The playground above is quite a ways up, and then it's a hill that comes down. And although we're close, it, it's not like it's level with the school parking lot by any means. It's kind of a, go and take a look. Even though it's close, it's pretty well sheltered.
You could probably get inside, Ian, to take a look at anything historical, because I think the Historical Society could be interested in some of the artifacts.
Well, I don't want to jump ahead like that, but.
If we find any, I hope we do.
Yeah.
We're going to look, we're going to try to see if there are any underground. There might be.
I just want to mention something. You mentioned calling it Pillsbury Farm. We already have Mr. Preston's daughter. She owns the Colonel Pillsbury House, and that was a farm. So to avoid any confusion, you might want to think about that, considering that.
I kind of liked it. One farm connotation, so I'm in keeping with the Mac Farm, but also honoring the Pillsbury family that was here so long, has been here so long.
Well, his daughter owns the Pillsbury's house. So you could call it the Flyer Farm.
No, 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 no. No, it doesn't. It's the history of the town that we're, we want to, want to respect.
Maybe you can delve into the history of the house and select the name from the original residents.
That's a possibility, too.
Yeah, we're looking, somebody's helping us actually look at the whole history of the house.
Can I ask one last question?
Yeah.
I, I'd like to know if the planning, all the members of the planning board have taken a look at the master plan for the town common area?
I would say that they have.
Of course, to approve it, we had to, yes.
Take a look at the vision for it.
That was, that was the last question?
Well, I was just going to ask.
One more last question.
I was just going to ask that the master plan steering committee and the implementation committee members recuse themselves from voting on this.
I voted.
There's no vote.
There's no, no vote?
Isn't it to rezone?
No, not a rezone.
No. I mean, they're only advisory. They make recommendations to the planning board.
But doesn't that show a bias? No.
No, no. Maybe you can write something to show us where there is a bias, Ian.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, because I think we need some details.
You can school me on this. I don't know. I'm just asking.
You're just asking. There's no bias.
Okay. Well, I thank you.
Any more questions?
No, Mr. Flyer, I just want to say I do commend you for restoring the Naylor House.
Thank you.
That will be a nice addition to the town. The rest of it, I'm not so sure, but it's not up to me.
Well, we'll see. I, you know, I brought my granddaughter to those meetings where, that you mentioned, a few of the meetings, because I'm trying to get my children to start appreciating, my grandchildren to start appreciating the things that we're all dealing with now. And we sat there, and I remember you being there.
And I also remember talking to you at voting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
There was a lot of back and forth before I listened to, so I just want to say.
That's all the past, Ian. Let's not relive things.
But you're welcome anytime.
But you can, you can give it up to Mr. Flyer probably outside this meeting room if you want, but.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, a member of the public has accused me here on television of collusion. And I'm sorry, but may I respond?
Yes, you may respond.
Please? Okay. My reference earlier to Mr. Flyer, I thought was clear, perhaps I was not, was in reference to my chairing the master plan committee, of which we had many participants throughout town and some from outside town. At that time, Mr. Flyer was from outside town, I believe, or was in transit. I do know members of his family who do live in town. Like anyone else who participated in the master plan, including yourself, Ms. Champeau, I welcomed everyone and heard opinions and thoughts from everyone. I didn't dissuade anyone on any opinions. I invited them to offer all. So I take umbrage with what was just said before, and I just want that on the record. I'm sorry, but thank you for the opportunity.
We'll make sure that is, that is on the record. I think the master plan involved probably over 200 people, Ian, and you were only one. Mr. Flyer probably was one that attended.
I know, I felt like I was only one.
But there's a lot of other people in this community that have ideas and opinions that might always, might not agree with you, but majority rules. That's the way we look at it. We do get input, and we put it all together.
In light of some of the discussion here, Mr. Chairman, in light of some of the stuff that's been in local papers recently, can you please reiterate for the public so everyone understands what the purpose of the master plan implementation committee is and how that process is designed to work?
Okay, maybe you can help this, Cynthia. But basically, it was, it's a body created by the planning board. And what they do is look at the recommendations that came from the master plan on what needs to be implemented. And what they're going to do is prepare a report for the planning board, and it'll be processed out to, planning board have some responsibility, staff will have some responsibility, town council have some responsibility, conservation will have some responsibility, recreation will have some responsibility, and that's how we get, we'll get things done.
Essentially. They are a sounding board. Their, their charge really is to not let the recommendations, and there are multiple pages of them, just sit on the shelf. They're looking, and the first big thing, obviously, is the audit of the zoning ordinance and trying to locate, and we mentioned two or three of the inconsistencies already this evening that are in the ordinance or in the regulations that need to be addressed and get that plan so that it is more current, or get the regulations to be more current than they are. A lot has changed in the world in the last even seven years that affect how towns do business. And you need to be more responsive and more flexible and more predictable in your process. And I'm not criticizing this town. That's true across the country. These are things that people are doing. And more communicative among staff members, I mean, there's all kinds of things that go into this, but we're looking at the zoning ordinance, we're looking at the regulations, and we're looking at the process. And the master plan legally is the document that informs all of this and the CIP, and that's the purpose of it.
Could you repeat that? I can hear you. All of what in the CIP?
The master plan is the legal document that informs the zoning and how it's structured and the regulations that will carry out that vision from the zoning. So, and it also informs the capital improvement program whereby the town determines what's a priority and where money gets spent. They're all tied together. So the implementation committee is really the group that's going to make sure that this plan doesn't sit on the shelf and that we actually are taking action. And the two things that they're looking at and working with right now are the town center and being part of that zoning audit as we move that along.
Chris, as, as the chairman of that committee, I think Cynthia really kind of hit the nail on the head for what its purpose in life is, to ensure that the master plan doesn't get put up on a shelf and collect dust, that there's someone measuring, and it's the voice of conscience for Londonderry, that someone was looking at that plan and asking questions of the planning board and asking questions of the council, asking questions of the town staff. Are we doing these things? Are we moving them along? Not everything will get done, but, you know, the town citizens put energy into putting this plan together, they're expecting someone to be keeping an eye on it. And that's the purpose of that committee.
We're, the conceptual discussion, Ian, so you're getting off course here, but.
May I just reiterate what we had said earlier? First of all, when Mr. Flyer came, he came to join his family who lived in the community, and he listened. And the only thing that he ever said to the committee members or staff is, what a wonderful process this is and what a wonderful town it is. He never gave his opinion, and he never gave any input as to what he thought this master plan should be, which was the right thing to do because he didn't live here. So to imply that his.
Ian, let Cynthia talk.
That his vision is what this master plan is, is because it's the collective vision of the majority of people who participated in that process. And it happens to also match the way, it's responding to the way the world is going. It's responding to the fact that people need affordable places to live, that our young people are leaving this state in droves because this is not where they want to live, this is not the kind of housing that they want. We don't provide for them, we don't provide for older people, and it's.
I'm just focusing on the town center.
Ian, let this go. This is, this is, concludes our, Cynthia talk, that's it.
I just want to let the public know that this, this particular applicant had no bearing on what he is now trying to implement on the property that he purchased in town. So that's the end of that.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Any questions of us? Any more questions of us at all?
No, I just want to thank you for spending so, so much time this evening. Bill said there's a Bruins game?
Bruins game. I haven't seen anyone come out of the.
It's an important one. Bill told me not to talk very much tonight because he wanted to get home to watch the game. But other than that, I really, I, I hope we get to know each other and, and I can be helpful and my people can be helpful to your efforts.
Cynthia.
Mr. Chairman, we still have the rezoning request.
Yes, that's going to be the next item. So our conceptual discussion has concluded, and we'll move to the next item on our agenda. NS Rafco Incorporated, Richard A. Flyer, trustee, owner and applicant, this is tax map number nine, lot 51. This is a public hearing to consider the applicant's request to rezone lot 51 from agricultural residential one to commercial four at number 132 Pillsbury Road, and it's currently zoned AR1.
And Mr. Chairman, what will our role be tonight?
What we'll do is, if we want to take action, the action would be to make a recommendation to the town council for rezoning of the parcel to C4.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we've had a lot of discussion about the zoning, and, you know, I would be comfortable with understanding the different nuances of how we could actually go about dealing with this zoning and this particular piece of property along with the site plan and the contingencies that may be associated with them. I would, I would recommend that we wait for that to come back and then, and then rehear the zoning based on that information we get back from legal and staff.
Well, I think we can conduct the hearing. We can either continue it or make a recommendation to the town council. But I think we need, at least, I think we've got a fair amount of input, what the use of the property is going to be.
Mr. Chairman, given, given the fact that I personally could not make a decision on this without having that type of information, I'm not sure if the rest of the board would feel comfortable with that. I would much prefer to have staff and legal come back and give us recommendations on how to proceed and then make a recommendation to the committee, town council, excuse me.
Okay. The other board, what we, what we do. Maria?
I do think we have a couple of unanswered questions, and I, I believe, you know, before we were saying that we had to check into a couple of things. If we wanted to go that route, that we wanted to check into a couple of things about contingent onsite plan. I know you had said that you weren't sure if that, we could even do that, but apparently we're not sure, so.
I would suspect, given prior communications, that that's not permitted. You've got to make a decision on the zoning standalone in itself. You can't apply conditions on the zoning part of it particularly. Site plans are another matter.
Right. And I'm quite confident that through the site plan, part piece of this, that you can control what goes on today and in the future. So my recommendation would be to send a recommendation to the town council. Should I continue reading? And then you can.
Okay, yeah.
We know what this property is. We've spent a lot of time on it. And because the proposed use is primarily residential, and although it is, the C4 zone will allow greater flexibility, including the mixed uses, which in this case would be residential and an office use. The C4 zone, and this is directly from section 2.4.1.2.4 of the zoning ordinance, is intended for neighborhood, commercial, and office use, limiting the size, scale, and expansion of neighborhood commercial uses in order to minimize traffic volumes and congestions. The additional C4 standards also limit building heights, footprint sizes, outdoor storage, and other conditions that make this zoning change appropriate for this setting. And we know the, the context of this site within the church and other institutional area with a town common across the street. And there are two commercially zoned parcels adjacent to Mammoth Road I mentioned earlier that are zoned both C3 and C4. So therefore, rezoning 132 Pillsbury Road to C4 zone makes sense because it allows the flexibility of mixed uses and reintroduces residences in the town center. It also begins the process of implementing the master plan on a small scale without changing the character of the neighborhood. Staff recommends that the planning board recommend to the town council that they approve. Staff recommends that the planning board recommend to the town council that they approve rezoning map nine, lot fifty-one, currently zoned AR one, agricultural residential one to the C four, commercial four zoning classification, as discussed at the May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen planning board meeting. And I'm going to add to that, because the details can be worked out through the site plan process.
Yes, okay. Anything to add at all, John?
No.
Okay, I'll, I'm gonna do the board, and then we'll go to the public, get public input, we'll bring it back to the board to make our, our decision, what we're gonna do. So I'll start the other end with Al.
Yeah, in view, I go along with staff's recommendation, and I think any conditions can be put under our site plan review.
Yeah, now that you worded it that way, I, I agree.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Lynn?
I'd like to understand the issues of going to the zoning board and getting a variance, as opposed to making a, making this particular zoning change, and what pitfalls you would see in doing that. I think there was a comment made earlier in the evening that you thought there'd be a lot more hurdles to cross, or hurdles to jump over, going to the zoning board, but I, I like that idea first, and if that doesn't work, then I, I kind of think that we would revisit this.
I would rezone it to C four.
John?
I, as I've already stated, I, I think we need to understand it. I think Lynn, you're, you're right, I agree with you, and I would like to see that as well.
I agree with Lynn and John. I mean, we're, we're in a, in a place that is extremely sensitive to the townspeople. We're kind of stepping on, treading on unknown waters, quite frankly. Myself personally, I think that everything that comes up, we should look at it separately to make sure that it does fit, and that we need guarantees that it's going to conform to what we want it to look. So I agree with, with you, John. I think that there should be further discussion.
Rick?
They say C four.
Chris?
Hobson's choice, isn't it?
Yes. Actually, this, I mean, it's only a recommendation that goes to the town council. The town council has at least two readings on this. One reading is the introduction of it, second reading is a public hearing.
Correct.
So, I mean, they, they are part of the vetting process also of this, so if there's any, any detail or anything, it could be done there, and certainly we can get opinions, let's say if the board does make a decision, we get opinions to give to the town council for their decision, decision making.
Yeah, so, so for my part, though, I mean, the problem is the, you know, C four's the best, best match out of what we have. We don't have the right match for what we should have here, but C four's the one, only one that sort of makes sense, so I'd go along with making the recommendation, because to your point, it's going to have two public hearings at the town council where it can come to a screeching halt.
Yes, and the, the council is the final determinator of, of this.
Well, I agree that with, with Chris and others about this will go to town council, and town council will have two readings on it. You know, as I also had made statements earlier, that, you know, being the first one through the gate, you know, is sometimes the hardest one to go through the gate, right, and the second one is usually kind of a breeze, right? You know, this being said, I, I really would caution us to take the time and do the due diligence, and fully understand and vet this out for what it's worth, and not push it on to town council at this particular time. We are the planning board, and we're asking to rezone in an area that is kind of, you know, new to us, and I think it, it's well worth our time, and unfortunately, I know it may hold you up a bit, but it may be well worth our time to fully understand and go through that process, so that when we do run up against this again, we know exactly how it's going to work, and we know exactly what we're going to be doing and how the recommendation should be made. And again, there's no slight on the plan that you're putting forward to us and, and what you want to do with the property. I agree with it a hundred percent. I, as I said earlier, it's all about the next guy down the road, and the future of how we're going to be doing this, this, this master plan, and, and this particular, you know, area, you know, the Mammoth Road corridor. And, and I strongly would urge the, the rest of the board to take that into consideration, and we do the due diligence first, and not just push this along.
So, yeah.
So, John, I would recommend you make the motion to table. If, if you want to have the legal council, you know, give us their opinion on, can you apply conditions to a C four zoning recommendation to the town council that would restrict this? That, to me, would be, you know, what, what you're asking for at this point.
What I'm actually asking for is, is, and I think what, what I heard from, from Lynn and, and James, is that, do the due diligence and to understand it. I'm, I'm not against making the recommendation for, you know, C four. I just really want to understand all the components of it, and what this really means to us, and, and obviously, there's the legal component to it, and others, and zoning components to it, that I think we, we need to understand, and it's now nine thirty. We've had a long discussion around what the property is to look like, and what's going to be on the property, but yet, in lieu of that, we're willing to make a five-minute decision on the zoning that may last this, this town a lifetime.
That, that's why I'm making the recommendation, you, maybe we table this with the request for staff to get input from the attorney, and to Lynn's question about, you know, what's the alternative?
What are the alternatives, exactly? And I, I wholeheartedly support John's position. I think we need to understand all the alternatives before we make a vote.
And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table...
I gotta go to the public first.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Sorry.
Got you all warmed up.
Sorry to slow you down.
That's all right. That's on the roll.
Okay, anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns about the rezoning of this parcel to C four?
Can I ask just where are we now? We on A or B?
We are on D, Ian. You still on A?
I just have one, only one point. I, it's all up to you, but I'm very concerned about saving the house, and now I, now it's under my watch, and I hope to get it going, the project this building season before the winter, and that's all, that's all. So I don't know how long it takes for everybody on this group to get the information they do need, but every week is precious at this point, because it's not your fault, it's just the house, it's not my fault either, it's just gonna, it's really in bad shape.
Okay, Cynthia?
We can bring it back to the next meeting, which is June fourth.
June fourth is our next meeting. So we can, what, I think the comfort level will be better if we get the information that the, the board members want, and what we will do is, I'll take a motion to continue this hearing till the fourth of June, seven P M. right here.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Lynn?
Second. You gonna get them to vote? Did you, did you, for Mary and Laura?
Yeah, oh, yes, I did, I did.
Yeah, we're official.
We're all, yeah, they're, they're official. Okay, motion by Lynn to continue, second by Rick.
Oh, Rick, yes. Rick, did you second, or did you second?
Be timed out.
You said a hold it.
Oh, okay. You, you want to make the second, or I'll let John make the second?
I'll second.
Okay. Hold a fight here. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing that all is in favor, this is continuing. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, say nay. Extinctions, if yours affirmative. The hearing on the rezoning of lot nine, map nine, lot fifty-one, one thirty-two Pillsbury Road, from AR one to C four is continued to the fourth of June, seven P M. right here. That's your only notice.
Thank you very much.
And that's not too far out.
Thank you.
Not too far out.
Couple weeks.
Thank you, ladies.
Maybe we can have the meeting in the house.